Call the meeting to order at 7:30. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the fire of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as God.
Roll call please. Present.
Present.
Here.
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 Presence. Um, bill of trustees attending remotely tonight, that's here. So the first item on the agenda, again, this was something in the works for some time. And as you may or may not know, we lost a former mayor of Antioch a week ago last Saturday. And we were making sure that we wanted to honor former mayor Michael J Haley. So I believe some of his family is here tonight. So I'll read this proclamation and talk about what the next steps in this process is to rename the street after his, after Mayor Haley. So Mayor, mayoral proclamation honoring former mayor Michael J Haley. Whereas Michael Mike J Haley born September 3rd, 1942, was a lifelong resident of Antioch, Illinois. And whereas Mike is a devoted husband to Susan Haley, loving father to his daughters Jennifer and Megan, and dedicated to his grandchildren, Mike, Maxwell, Jesse, as well as his 13 brothers and sisters and extended family. And whereas Mike served in the US military, was stationed in Korea during Vietnam War. And whereas Mike continued his public service upon his election as village trustee in the April 17th, 1973 general election of the village of Antioch, earning the second highest number of votes, by eight votes among six candidates for three available trustee seats. And whereas Mike served as village trustee until the April 19th, 1977 election where he was elected for a four-year term as mayor for the village of Antioch. And whereas Mike worked in other capacities, including the Secretary of State's office under Secretary of State Jim Edgar, and the Illinois State Lottery under then Governor Jim Edgar, until his return to the village of Antioch as village administrator in 2001 and 2005, when he ultimately retired effective August 1st, 2007. And whereas Mike was an accomplished elected official, which is evident throughout his career, including the construction of the Heributrick Sawmill as a bicentennial project. And whereas Mike was always willing and able to work with village staff and residents. And whereas, in addition to his services mayor, Mike continued to remain active in many groups such as the Antioch Lions Club and Antioch Rescue Squad. And whereas Mike is a hardworking and lively person who led his community with strength and integrity, and served as a role model for all. Now therefore, on behalf of the village board of trustees, I Mayor Scott Garner take immense pride in honoring and remembering Michael J Haley for his selfless service to his community. He had further proclaimed that the former West Depot Street from Cunningham to Hillside be renamed Haley Streets in honor of the former mayor, Michael J Haley, dated this 12th day of August, 2022. So again, I want to let you guys know that I was with Mary at Mike's bedside. So he got to hear this proclamation. He got to know that this was coming. So again, I want to thank the family for coming out here tonight. I want to present this to Susan if she's here.
Jennifer Toomey.
This is about 1/30 of the family, right?
Yeah.
All right, squeeze in here, squeeze in here. Tom, can you get it? Yeah, get it. See, we'll get back there.
There we go.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. And can you stay around for like two minutes and then you get out of here? Because I'm going to move the, I want to move the ordinance up to do the street, pass the street right now. Then you go on your way. But I think it's been decided September 3rd, which was discussed and then later realized that that would be Mike's 80th birthday. So that's coincidental and seems like an appropriate day to do the dedication. Can I get a vote to move item number? Move item number six? Seven, six up in the meeting. Can I have a motion second?
Second.
Motion trustee, you got it. Okay. So we're going to go through roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
All right. So Jim, do you want to present this? Or this is the request for changing the street name?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you. So this item is a ordinance renaming streets, Depot Street in front of Sawmill, which Mike was instrumental in establishing in Cunningham and Hillside to Haley Street. It will have three signposts at Hillside, Holbeck, and Cunningham with the honorary designation of Mayor Michael J Haley on that. So it will be both signs there. Voting to approve the change of the street name to Haley Street.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, I'll make the motion. Motion trustee Pierce. Second trustee Dominik. Roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the mayoral report is we have a new officer, a lateral hire. We have Michael Lindberg and I believe his family and friends here. All right. So we have the oath of office. I have Police Chief Gachow here to make the introduction.
Great. He seems to forget part of this, this party back there. So why ask his wife Teresa and granddaughter Charlotte to join my group. So as they're making their way up, he's also joined this evening by his daughter Margaret, son Michael, his girlfriend Skylar, and the daughter Kaylee. Of course, we've got the star to show up here, Charlotte. So just to introduce you a little bit to Mike. So Michael comes to us after serving 26 years with the Chicago Police Department. So he's going to be our, our new old guy. Michael grew up on the north side of Chicago, attended St. Gregory High School, graduating in 1989. They have four children, as I already mentioned. And in the spare time, he likes to go to concerts, choice fitness, vintage cars, and late life. I just wanted to share a minute, a little bit of diverse experience that Mike's bringing to us. During his, his career with Chicago PD, he's obviously spent some time in patrol, was heavily involved in community policing programs for residential and commercial. Served as a school resource officer, comes to us crisis intervention train, was a late front bike patrol officer, ended his career in strategic decision support center. He's experienced a lot. Part of his, his greatest experience is working with the Democratic National Convention, Chicago Bulls riots rally, security details. Learned several things, Chicago security details, with all the sports teams, spent a lot of time working with Chicago Bears, Bulls, and Public Security assignments, because they won big championships over the years. Also had the honor to work for the NATO summit in 2012. One of the things that really drove through us to Mike when he applied with us was the statement he wrote in his interest into any Antioch Police Department. When I read it, I knew it was an officer that we wanted to take a look at, because I really think it speaks to who he is. When I retired from the Chicago Police Department on January 15th, 2022, my wife and I wanted to live in Antioch because we were very fond of the community, what Antioch had to offer for my family. After moving to Antioch in April 2022, I felt I could still continue to serve in the larger community, especially desired to do so when I live in. Becoming an Antioch police officer would give me the opportunity to share my 26 years of experience with the most diverse police districts in the city of Chicago. During his career as a Chicago police officer, he gained the skills of being an active listener, conflict resolution, and a myriad of, myriad of other skills the public expects upon enforcement today. Empathy, compassion, trust building, and he learned were very important to developing strong relationships with the communities. He helps to share those with our officers. And Mike has a lot to bring forth immediately before we have him. So having him with us, I would ask him to do a best critical.
Thank you and welcome aboard. Next, we have citizens wishing to address the board. We have two people that signed up this evening. If there's anybody else that wishes to address the board, there's a sign up sheet here. There's the madam clerk to just read the rules of procedure to the public comments.
Yeah. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to say about the business of the board. The board appreciates your stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the village, and public input is very helpful. The board must protect visibility and be informed of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please state your name and address and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous, and the board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or cussing subjects members of the board or staff. To the extent multiple speakers are requested a single issue, the mayor or chair of the meeting asserts the rights to limit the number of speakers making public comment of a repetitive nature and/or limit the amount of time for public comment. The board does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during public comment hearing.
Thank you. First individual signed up here is Guido Arkea. Just make sure you're talking to the microphone so it picks it up.
I'm, I'm here for two things. Um, just two years.
Just state your name for the record.
We work for a property owner at 1224, 1234 Main Street.
Okay, go ahead.
At 1224 Main Street, right at the corner of Waina Terrace and Main Street. For the last two years, I have told Public Works about a hole, a lot of, actually that little girl would just fall right into the hole. Um, right at the corner, right there, it goes underneath the street, goes underneath the sidewalk. Sidewalk is collapsing. The only response I get from the city is that it's a state road. It's not their responsibility. I thought I'd bring it to board because your, the city doesn't want to see one, at least Public Works don't want to see them to do anything about it. So I thought I'd bring it to board and so at least negative trust their public works. Um, the other thing I came in for is ordinance 2201-6, which is the residential inspection. I, I don't know if you guys spoke to stakeholders before you passed this ordinance or such, but I made a meeting with Mr. Gary. He said, he decided not to show up for the meeting, but um, I was trying to get some information about this and for some reason, nobody seems to be able to have this information. But there's supposed to be a timeline set forth, the code to life and safety, the condition which constitutes hazard to health and safety of occupants, the residential rental properties, otherwise strip rockets. See, rental property applies with the village parking requirements outlined in the village ordinance. I'm trying to find this paperwork. I think he's not supplying that with me. Also, should establish a meeting schedule. I'd see the schedule. All of it. So that way we actually have the information in front of us. I also would say reconsider this. You're actually going into people's homes. They're violating their privacy in this ordinance. I don't think a lot of people would like them. If you, I don't know, you've got the homeowners, not tenants, but I don't think you would like people walking through your house. So I'm not a tenant. I care less. But, you know, I'm sure I'm, I'm going to inform my tenants. I imagine it's going to probably see a lot of them in the next few weeks.
Thank you. Thank you. I have Tim Hill on the list to speak regarding items eight and nine, which is the ordinance regarding 894 Anita.
Thank you. My name is Tim Hill. I have the unit 894 Anita Avenue. And I actually signed up if there were any questions to address, any questions that they, that you might have me.
And we can do that during the ordinance portion too.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I didn't know.
Right. Welcome. Glad you're here. Thank you.
All right.
Next, we have three items on the consent agenda. Are there any trustees asked for removal of one of these items from the consent agenda? All right. If not, roll call, please. A motion in the, yeah, motion in the second, please. Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Bluthard. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero voting no motion carries. Next item on the agenda is regular business. This is consideration and approval to ratify the August 10th, 2022 payment of accounts payable as prepared by staff, the amount of $301,000, 600, $301,689.78. Do I have a motion in the second? Motion trustee Bluthard, second trustee Dominik, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Five voting yes, one voting no motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of payment of accounts payable as prepared by staff, the amount of $377,038.67. Do I have a motion in the second? Motion trustee Dominik, second trustee Peterson. Any discussion on this? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Five voting yes, one voting no motion carries. Item number six has been addressed. Next item is item number seven, consideration and approval of an ordinance adding one more class A1 outdoor restaurant liquor license for Johnny's Chop House, Johnny's LLC, DPA Johnny's Snack Shop located at 1500 Main Street. Ordinance number 22-08-44. Do I have a motion in the second, waving the second reading? Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Bluthard. Discussion. I know, I leave the restaurant owners here if there's any questions. Any discussion regarding this item? All right. All right. Roll call, please. Six voting yes, zero voting no motion carries. Next item is item number eight, which is consideration and approval of an ordinance granting a variance for the Teamster Horsemen to operate a not-for-profit club slash meeting hall at the property commonly known as 894 Anita Avenue. Ordinance number 22-08-45. Do I have a motion in the second, waving the second reading? Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Dominik. Mr. Gary is here to present, and I know the advocates are here as well.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. As mayor, I come to be very again from a recommendation for a special use of variance. We've been working with Teamster Horsemen for the past almost a year. They took this property over there at the small industrial building over on Anita Avenue. They've been using this space and they've been working with staff for some time to actually come into compliance. Unfortunately, they were not in compliance. Currently, the property in our business district or form-based code, it does not permit a club or meeting, meeting facilities. And based on that, the advocates working with staff. So what they're seeking this evening is a variance, a special use of the form-based code to allow them to operate a not-for-profit club or meeting hall for their not-for-profit operations. I'll perhaps there, actually here this evening, they can outline any questions about your, any questions you may have as it relates to their actual events. I believe they'll have, I think they'll leave one potential fundraiser per month, or again, they raise funds for numerous community events, community activities, and community groups. Again, for the record, this is a not-for-profit. This was reviewed as a public hearing by the planning commission. We did conclude that the advocate did meet all the requirements or findings of facts that were required for a variance, also for a special use. So with that, planning commission did make a fairer recommendation. So I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have as it relates to the special use of variance. Again, representative, I believe is actually here from the club to answer any specific questions as it relates to the number of members they have and what they're proposing to use this facility for. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to give a two-minute presentation if we can knock out some of the questions?
Again, I'm Tim Hill. This is how we are. I'm Tim Hill. Thank you for your time and for letting us address this board. We're very happy to be here in Antioch. We are a motorcycle association. Most of us have lived and or worked here for decades, 22, 23, 25 years, residents and employees. I proudly volunteer trash recycling at some. We've set up this group because we all just love to ride horses. And we were looking for an outlet for that. We found a, a group called the Teamster Horsemen that was set up 26 years, three years ago, 23 years ago in Bensonville. And it's based on our, our union activity. We're predominantly union members. And so we've been active at the BFW for four years. And we raised money for primarily the BFW National Home for Children is our, is our main charity. We donated tons of thousands of dollars at this point. Our local BFW as well. The Open Arms Mission, we donated thousands of pounds of, thousands of dollars to them as well. When we took over the lease of the location, we were really informed that we realized that we had made a mistake. So we just wanted to come into compliance. We want to be an asset to the community. We don't want to be, we're trying to work within the rules. And so that's just what we're here for. We, our benefits are generally, we, we ran a comedy show with the, with an individual, all, all local comics from Waukegan and the Chicago land area. They used to, they used to do their comedy shows at the, at the train, at the tracks over there, the, Jesus. But in Lake Villa, there was a theater that closed down terminals. And it closed down during COVID. And he's been, he was using us. At that point, we were able to raise upwards of a couple of thousand of dollars that we donated directly to our local BFW. So again, we're a nonprofit organization. We prefer not to be called a club because we don't have that club lifestyle. We are all residents of the area. We're all here for the law. So if there's any questions, I'm happy.
Trustee Pierce? Trustee Masek?
So type it out there. You've got that charter for your oriented chapters, the other ones that's no members of gangs and stuff like that.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
They got, they got a chapter that's no gang affiliation, a chapter. These are all little boys. Because I was out there. I looked at what, with Jay, Jay were up out there.
Trustee Peters?
I don't have any questions.
Trustee Bluthard?
No questions. Just follow you for your turn.
Trustee Durbin?
Um, I've been out there as well. Can I, I can sign and say, everything looks great. I really appreciate what you guys do for our community, for children, for veterans. So, thank you.
Trustee Dominik? Thank you. All right. On that note, I'd ask for a roll call regarding ordinance number 2208-45. Six voting yes, zero voting no motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance granting a special use, the Teamster Horsemen to permit them to operate a not-for-profit club slash meeting hall at 894 Anita Avenue, TGV 22-06, ordinance 22-08-46. Do I have a motion in the second, waving the second reading?
So, waving the second reading.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Bluthard. Any discussion on this item? If not, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution accepting the proposal for the painting expense with Brightway Signs LLC as part of the village placement proposal, ghosted, bringing history to downtown Antioch, approving the payment in the amount of $26,200. Resolution number 22-65. Do I have a motion in the second? Motion trustee Dominik, second trustee Peterson. If there's any questions, Jim Moran is here to answer those questions. But I started with trustee Pierce.
I, I'm excited to see these go up. I did want to be clear that that's Scott's theory online. I'm number two. I have nothing to do with that other than I like. I have nothing to do with that other than I like chocolate ice cream and anything dairy related.
Trustee Mason? Trustee Peterson?
No questions.
Trustee Bluthard? Trustee Burman?
No questions.
Trustee Dominiac? Alright, uh, roll call please. Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Um, next item, item number eleven is consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing the exist, extension of the intergovernmental agreement. Between the Antioch Police Department and the Board of Education. Of Antioch Community High School District one seventeen, ordinance number twenty-two dash oh eight dash forty-seven. Do I have a motion in the second, wait in the second reading? Motion trustee Bluthard, uh, second trustee Dominiac. Um, any discussion on this item? Not roll call please. Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance for a text amendment to section ten dash twelve dash two E of the Antioch Village Code. Title zoning ordinance number twenty-two dash zero seven dash forty, do I have a motion in the second? We have a motion, um, we have a motion from trustee, uh, Dominiac, a second from trustee Peterson. Um, just for the record, this, this will be the second reading of this ordinance, correct? Okay, alright, so, um, yeah, yeah, we're not waiting, yeah, alright, so, um, Mister Garian?
Yes, thank you, your honor. Again, this matter comes back to the board for consideration of a tax amendment. Uh, for, um, the recreational vehicle, um, aspect of our zoning ordinance. I just wanted to start again, for, for the record, we actually do have current regulations. We actually regulate, um, actually have a PowerPoint that actually outlines our current regulation, uh, we did. We have specifically parking in the front yard, parking vehicles, recreational vehicles, boats or trailers on areas. The front yard other than the driveway is prohibited. All recreational vehicles, boats, trailers must be parked on a hard, improved surface. So that, those are our current regulations. Um, just for the record, I think in the past six years, since I've been here, I have no recollection of actually ever. Uh, sending a letter or issuing any type of administration citation for enforcement of recreational vehicles in Antioch. Generally has not been a major issue with one exception. So the impetus of this proposed change was approximately two months ago, we had a complaint with some neighbors. Uh, we had a recreational, uh, actually a resident who had parked a recreational vehicle, uh, truck, vehicle on the street. And they had a guest who was actually residing on the street in that RV for approximately one month. They were under a hardship and, you know, it was a very nice person, but nevertheless. Uh, there was concerns about some residents about having this RV, uh, on the street with a resident living in the RV. Uh, also yesterday we did, was, we were notified that, uh, individuals living in a RV in one of our local storage facilities, so. Um, so obviously that would not be consistent, consistent, I think with our general policy. So based on that, staff initiated a proposed amendment to simply add, to really kind of go back to our previous policy. Which was, I believe, adopted back in nineteen seventy-six and was our general policy for vehicles, recreational vehicles. And generally the major change to that, uh, is again prohibiting RVs parked on the street. And allowing residents or guests to live on the public right-of-way in a RV. Uh, so with that, I did provide a, um, some illustrations I could walk you through or maybe just show you. So this is, I'm sorry, Jim, go back to the next, last one. This is a perfect example of what you generally see, uh, a typical RV or a boat in driveway. That's completely consistent with the ordinance permitted. Probably eighty percent of all the RVs, just based on my survey, on the past few days, actually have this illustration where the RVs parked in a driveway. Or an extension of the driveway, that's completely consistent with our current ordinance. It will be consistent with proposed changes. Next one. Uh, the other opportunity, other things I see a lot is actually a RV parked on the side of the house. Certainly our current ordinance and our previous ordinance, that does require that those RVs or boats or trailers be parked on the side. I'm sorry, on a hard surface, that could be pavers, asphalt, cement, it says to be some type of improved surface. So this illustration showed that would be consistent. Another, um, illustration, next one. This, so you went to, uh, partially the front yard, side of the driveway. Again, I see some examples in the build of this, so you added some pavers to your driveway, parked your boat, your RV there, that would be consistent with the ordinance. I want to show you some examples that would not be consistent with the current ordinance and proposed ordinance. Next one. So somebody parked, um, a RV on somebody else's property line, on generally on the side yard, you know, on a zero block line. That, that would not be consistent with this new proposed, uh, ordinance. Last example, which would not be consistent, obviously our concern there is the potential impact on the adjacent neighbor. Another example, somebody parks, uh, unimproved, somebody parks their RV or boat in the yard, front yard. On an unimproved surface, again, that would not be consistent with the current ordinance nor would be consistent, uh, with our proposed ordinance. So I just wanted to use these illustrations, demonstrate that, uh, give you some examples of what would be permitted. And would not be permitted under this proposed ordinance. With that, I'll be more than happy, uh, to, uh, answer any questions.
Trustee Pierce?
Um, first question I have is, in the ordinance. It states, uh, if I remember correctly, um, no pub parking on public streets, right away, is that a change?
That is a change, that's correct.
Okay, so what do we do about the poor, the poor guy who for some reason is on a trip, comes home and arrives back at like ten o'clock at night? And he can't get into his storage facility, wherever he meets, parks trailers, they pull him up in front of his house. And gets up in the morning and sometime will rise and they file a complaint for the park on the road.
Technically that would be a violation, um, I mean, there would be an opportunity to actually park it in the driveway. I mean, he could actually park the vehicle in the driveway. Um, under our dwelling units, based on that, it's a one-day or temporary use, it would not constitute a dwell. We actually have a definition of zoning ordinance, what constitutes dwelling. So under that interpretation, um, if he was there for a night or a week, that would, based on my interpretation of the ordinance, that would not be a dwelling unit.
But he started his parking on the road, a lot of traffic.
That's correct. Under the proposed ordinance.
Poor guy. Other than that, I think your major fight order might be on this, uh, ordinance as a whole, I think it's a force in action for age-based. There's a lot of people don't live in age-based, so.
Trustee Mason?
This is the same ordinance, Linderhurst has, Linderhurst has the same, same ordinance, three, four, Linderhurst, on the side of buildings. I'm sorry, this is the same one that Linderhurst has, where you gotta, uh, park your boat, trailer on a concrete surface. They had that from, geez, from the seventies. So this is no, Linderhurst is not an HOA association. So this is, this is no different, HOA, the problem with the RV is you can't park at the driveways, but the driveways are too short. So it doesn't make any sense, this is, you, you, this is keeping people from living on the streets. With their big thirty-two-foot RVs for a week, so, yeah. I'm in favor, I'm in favor of this because that, that's happening all the time. Because they don't want to put the store, they just leave it out in the street.
Trustee Peterson?
I don't have any comments.
Trustee Bluthard? Trustee Burman?
No comments.
Trustee Dominiac?
Right, coach, right, again, the dwelling, so it's quasi-permanent or obviously somebody can operate a retail store, have their RV. Put it in driveway, now I have a small retail store. I think it doesn't say commercial. I mean, it's, 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 I brought up the issue as a, as your volition, I mean, never had that issue, but, uh, and I don't anticipate it, but theoretically. I guess somebody could do it, but, um, I mean, obviously it's a property zoning issue too. Obviously, uh, would not constitute a home occupancy, uh, and therefore would not be consistent with commercial. A zoning of a residential area, so we would have prerogative to enforce that, so it probably would not be necessary to add commercial.
Any other discussion on this end? Alright, if you can down here, if not, uh, roll call please. Five voting yes, one voting no, motion carries. Um, next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance amending. Section twelve to chapter eight of title one of the municipal code of Antioch. Establishing an administrative hearing procedure for public safety employee benefit act claims, ordinance number twenty-two dash eight dash forty-eight. Do I have a motion in the second waving the second reading? Motion trustee Mason? Second trustee Peterson, any discussion or questions?
Can we get an explanation of this from the attorney, please?
Thank you, trustee, so the SEVA benefits, there's a benefit system that, um, deals with first responders and the hearing. Process for those first responders and how benefits are paid throughout this process. Do you have a specific question or?
What are we doing now?
I don't think there's a hearing, oh, can we ask the clerk to answer that?
Okay, so then my, my question would be, um. Before the village handled this administratively internally, and now we're gonna be establishing a novel air.
Yes.
Positively help the village from, from this process?
No, this creates a due process type system, where we understand that there's, there's actually a procedure and a process that goes through this. We believe that this is the preferred method, and this is also the method that most municipalities are adopting as time.
And who has currently the final determination?
It's an adjudication type system.
I understand that, but who currently makes the determination? Not under this proposal?
So we're taking this out of the village's hands per se and putting it into more of an adjudication process, which is again, the legal trend in the area of law. And create some separation between the parties, which we do think is beneficial on for the village. Thank you, trustee.
Any other questions? Alright, roll call please. Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Um, last item is again, consideration and approval of an emergency ordinance ratifying the mayoral declaration of urgency. Relating to coronavirus, ordinance number twenty-two dash eight dash forty-nine, do I have a motion in the second, waving the second reading? Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Dominiac, discussion? Yes. Um, four voting yes, three voting no, motion carries. Uh, next item is the administrator's report.
Thank you, your honor, real quickly, I would like to bring to the board's attention that, uh. We won an award, I have trouble with words today, sorry. Um, the uncover Antioch's temperature that we ran last fall. The uncover Antioch's temperature that we ran last fall was submitted for an award, a program award from the American Planning Association in Illinois. And we won. So, uh, later on in September, uh, someone from village, maybe going down to Chicago to accept the award. So just thought to bring that to your attention, it's kind of cool. Um, just a little bit of an update on excavation activities across the street, uh, they're concluding. We are, we ran slightly over, it was three twenty-five. There was a, a need to bring in some different materials, excavate some additional materials. Um, a little more backfilling anticipated, so we're about twenty-five thousand, we're probably gonna close this out, close with three fifty. Um, but the good news is, is it's done really well, no real surprises to speak of. Um, and the, the work there should be concluding probably Friday or early next week. So just thought to bring that to the board's attention.
Trustee Pierce?
So as part of that process, that three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars that was really gaining any hazardous condition that we had had previously identified?
Yes, by, by, by removing the soil and or trade the soil and removing it to a landfill, happens to be the design landfill in this case.
So we need to go into millions and millions of dollars that were projected, right?
Jim, I think that included, there were two hotspots I found during excavation, is that right? Additional?
You can only predict so much in these projects, it's environmental, so we came pretty close to what we expected, but there, there was, we uncovered a few things maybe we didn't expect.
Trustee Dominiac?
Yeah, so, um, the next step would be, is the design development phase of this project is concluding. Steering committee met, um, very recently and was, kind of showing where we're at with this part design. Some new renderings are coming your way, I'm hoping first meeting in September. Um, nothing's really changed all that much, but what's happening behind the scenes is, um, the design, um. Once it comes to you for design development approval, we're gonna be at a hundred design development phase, which means that. All the details have been identified, but not necessarily, uh, put into a construction, a bidding document, yeah, or a construction document. So to move to the next phase, which is the development of the construction docks, we expand the, you know. Probably thousands of moving, moving pieces on this project to exact specifications, locations, um, details. And all of that, so you'll end up, you know, it will take a plan set that's probably twenty or thirty pages right now, and it'll get expanded to a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty pages. With specification books, which are gonna be sufficient to instruct a contractor of what exactly they're building. You know, exact colors, exact, uh, details, uh, as well as enable us to submit for permits. The various agencies are going to submit to, so that's what's happening behind the scenes. Um, I expect, um, this to be completed late fall. And I'm being told that this will be out to middle of winter in January. Getting, we'll probably selecting a contractor in February, uh, to enable a, um, commencement of construction in the spring. So there, there, there's gonna be a lot of materials to get here. I mentioned contractors getting very busy between award, commencement of construction, to start, you know, prepping and ordering and mobilizing this project.
How long is the permit? Okay, I got, how many agencies have to give us permit to do this?
It's a great question. We're gonna need permit for army corps engineers, IDNR. We're gonna need permit for SMC. We're, we're gonna have to interact with I-DOT, so. Yeah, IEP is also, there's a current requirement, so there's probably five agencies. Which is why we're trying to detail these plans, so they are, it is a complete subset, where there should not be many questions. On the waterway aspect, you know, SMC, we've already interacted with SMC, we know all about this project. They are instrumental in funding this project, thanks to SMC. So, uh, there is no red flags at this point, we're improving the waterway, we're increasing capacity, we're, we're mitigating potential flooding upstream. So they're, they're, they're not gonna. So they're, they're, they're not going, I'm not expecting a difficult permitting process, but for the state, I, IDOT can challenge it. But we're working in affecting IDOT, we're really going to ask to rebuild the sidewalk, relocate utilities, you know, we're not asking IDOT to. We're not asking for access, or we're not sending any more or less drainage there, what, you know, so, but, but we should make sure we're coordinating coordination.
Thank you.
Good questions. Oh yeah, we are out to bid currently for the, the parking lot, the police department. We have a substantial completion date that this year. The final completion, maybe landscaping, you know, maybe lead into next year, to June, or whatever the growing season will start. So we're hopeful, we're going to get a good response, I think we're opening bids. September first next week. And I'm hoping to come to the board meeting, first meeting at September twelfth. To recommend an award to a contractor and get them going, there was good interest at the, the pre-bid meeting. There were four or five contractors that were showing interest, so it's good news.
Put in this body, how about the road program of the bond?
The bond, yeah. So the, uh, the village's recent bond issuance is very near completion, I believe closing is today, tomorrow. So funds will be wired to the village. Tomorrow, apparently, and. Now we get to the fun part of, so again, I need to approve it. And then the road, road program has begun, saw cutting is, they saw cut to the. Removal and replacement of curves first, network is, is ongoing right now. See the milling machines come in after the denture curves are done. These roads will be milled and then those, those machines go away and the paving machines will show up. Primarily paving this year, sequoia terrace and antiphil.
Thank you. Alright, thank you. So this clerk, any report? Any trustee reports?
So I just want to take a moment to thank our public works department, I don't know who they've got watering the plants down town. But they've done a wonderful job with those plants, so I didn't want to drive by there, there's some couple of guys out there with hoses watering from a truck and stuff. I, I think it's quite an improvement from the dead drag league, worn out, spindly looking things used to be there, so. I wanted to make sure those guys got special recognition and I know the public works out there working hard, they've got barricades up on. Or Nelson Road where they worked on a water main break, there's other places they're out working, so when you see a Mud Wars guy, please tell him thank you for their work this summer.
Thank you, trustee basic. Trustee Peterson?
I would just like to say thank you to the, uh, the village for everything they did, honoring my brother and his passing. Thank you to the police department for patrolling the traffic for his funeral and I just appreciate the outpouring. It, my family's very great, thank you.
Trustee Luther?
I'm Steve Berman.
No, God.
Trustee Domeniac?
I have just a couple of quick things, first of all, I think everybody is aware of the PSA that was put out by the police department, so I want to probably recognize that. The other thing I wanted to share with you is that subsequent to the strategic planning meeting, we had a lot of discussion there about the bond and all the projects that we get going on and all exciting things that are going to be happening. And as a follow-up to that, I met with Jim Milan, his marketing liaison, and he's working on a newsletter and a way to get the information out to the community about all the great things that have all happened. We need to come up with a method that reaches everybody, basically create vehicle, but not a different sense, but. The other thing that we talked about at the meeting and the election is going to be working on that is to come up with some kind of a, a branding, you know, we all love that word. Around these projects, so we're working on that as well, so that we can continue to communicate, particularly as projects may proceed to not be moving forward because of the work that's been behind the scenes, so excited about that.
Thank you. Alright, um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the regular business meeting.
Some of?
At some point we need a very short session, it could be after. On motion trustee Peterson? Second trustee Domeniac, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries, meeting adjourned at seven twenty-six, we'll take a five minute break and then start the committee of the whole meeting. I can call the meeting to order at seven thirty-six, this is the committee of the whole meeting, roll call please. Present, all the trustees are here in person, first item on the agenda, I need the, is the approval of the July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two committee of the whole meeting minutes as presented to have a motion in the second. Motion trustee Luther? Second trustee Peterson, any discussion, not roll call please. Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries, no mayoral reports other than I will just address this item on the agenda. Based on the first year in office and meetings and specifically what happens, particularly at the last meeting and some meetings earlier in the year. I have decided we probably need to discuss some of the meeting decorum. After reading some of the attorney general reports in case law, which I think the main one I found, attorney Viselli has a copy of it here. Gives wide, wide latitude to public comments and also. You know, basically states that if we have this procedures that we read, that it's not codified, it's not forcible, so to speak. So again, just to open the discussion, for those of you that were in attendance or not, at the quarterly meeting, I did address this openly and apologize to. Our police chief and notify him, you know, for what happened at that last meeting, notified him that there's no. Nothing going on with that matter and any personal matters, same thing with trustee Berman who had some things that, you know, they've crossed the line as personal versus business. So we just want to open this discussion, I don't know how much we need to codify this, next month is IML. So I'll be trying to find as many meetings on the open meetings act sessions as I can and ask questions on how far people could take these comments and. When they can be redirected or again, where, where it crosses the line on what's allowed versus the open meeting act for public comment, so. In that regard, I would probably ask maybe attorney Viselli to give an overview of the current law on this and have a discussion on what we want to do to, again. Right, trend locally and nationally of what's being said in open meetings.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I was asked what we can do to ensure that order is maintained during public comment. With the understanding that people should not be punished for devoting their lives and times for public service, including to our village. And just as a general overview, remember that we are dealing with laws including the open meetings act and the first amendment. And again, before I even go into the law itself, this is on the committee of the whole for a reason. This is to open a discussion on this topic, it was intentional, that it was not brought to the board in any other manner. It then this one to literally start a discourse amongst you, the corporate authorities of the village, to discuss what. You want in any ordinance if you do pass it, so again, this is to open a discussion on what you would want in any ordinance. On decorum during public comments if you did want to pass it. With that, I have here a binding attorney general opinion from March the sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. There are copies of it available and I will just read some statements of law. And the statements of law, and again, I am, I'm just going to read from it. On the applicable law that gives some guidance as to what we look for when we draft these things, or as the village crafts and ordinance. A public body has the inherent authority to conduct a meeting in an efficient and orderly manner. A public body may propagate reasonable time, place and manner rules aimed at preserving order and decorum. However, such rules must tend to accommodate rather than to unreasonably restrict the right to address public officials, and this from page seven. Although a public body may enforce rules regarding decorum, content-based restrictions must narrowly construed. Rules that govern the decorum of a meeting are permitted only if those rules are directed to conduct what is actually disturbing or impending a meeting. Even in limited public forums, like a city council meeting, the first amendment tightly constrains governmental powers. Again, while these are. An important thing is to understand. Is that as a public official, these statements give us, could be, and again, I'm reading from page eight, insensitive, mean spirited, personal attacks. And then reading from a twenty sixteen opinion. Finding that a public body violated the OMA by imposing a rule that prohibited personal attacks against others or rude or slanderous remarks. Now turning to page. Page eight. If you look on the top trustee, you'll see that there's page numbers, it says page. Are you ready trustee? Thank you trustee. So trustee Pierce, do you have another question, could you state your question again?
I kind of forgot it now, but I think my question was, could you explain the part where you're talking about profane, personal attacks, remember, they cannot be restricted or?
Yes, so the first amendment protects profanity, as odd as that sounds, there was an issue actually. We did research on this issue because there are people who have profane language that drive up and down streets. And I'm not being partisan about the president and whether you can bar that or not, and there was literally a Supreme Court case that if you use a profane word. That starts with F, that is protected speech, and it's political speech, so you could ride around and say. Half the president, and there's not, it is a first amendment protected speech, this went to the, out the United States Supreme Court. So right or wrong, distasteful or not, comfortable or not. And again, when this isn't, this isn't law about whether a person's being classy or honorable or respectful. This is, I have to give you the advice of what the first amendment allows and what the open meetings act allows for. So statements that are slanderous are even protected under the first amendment. It is not. My personal opinions are immaterial to all this, but my statement of law is clear and it's right, it's complaining, it's again, page eight for everyone who's following along. That a public body violated OMA by imposing rules that prohibit personal attacks against others or rude or slanderous remarks. Clearly it's wrong from a moralistic standpoint, no one's arguing with that point. What I'm giving you is the statement of where we're at with the law and that's based upon the last few meetings and an attempt to try to at least start a discussion. As was requested by me or of me to impose some additional. Rules for order, because you will find in the case law, as the mayor particularly said. When these are upheld, it's because there's rules backing them up. You don't just make a call, there's a standard and a rule that goes on.
So, so my question goes to the part here where it says. By the OMA by imposing rule that prohibited personal attacks against others or rude or slanderous remarks, so if I was standing in the podium. And I attacked, I'm just going to, me, I, I, I'm just going to use me as a. Say I was Joe Public, stay at the podium, I said Scott Pearson is really ugly because he's got white hair. Is that a personal attack or slanderous or, or is it an opinion, I mean, are they allowed to say that?
I don't want to get into the definite, the legal definition of slander, but yeah, they can say, especially as it goes in a public office, discharging their public duties. You surrender some of that when you do take a public office, that you become open for criticism and essentially that's the nature of the first amendment. And I don't want to get into slander about opinions, it's like saying the Mona Lisa's not a good thing, you can't sue on that because that's an opinion, right? But slanderous remarks based on facts are protected under the first amendment.
But now in the case of the last meeting where we had the gentleman up there pounding the podium and yelling real loud. Acting in a, what was perceived to be threatening manner. Is that, does that move a breach of decorum or is that him just expressing himself?
So if the, the, what my argument would be is if you wanted to say that someone breached decorum, that they are acting in a manner so as to disturb the meeting. And we want rules, we want to impose good rules, strong rules, based upon an analysis of law that says. This is the standard, that your, your, your actions, your content neutral actions. Are stopping the efficient operations of this village at the board meeting.
How do we define, I'm sorry, how do we define that as a breach of decorum? Do we have to go to the level say pounding the podium is a breach?
I, that's an excellent question and my concern about going to that much minute detail on that is. When you make a list of things, all those things not listed are assumed to be excluded from that list. Okay, so what we're, again, what we're trying to do here is to start this dialogue, to do, start this discourse and that's why we passed out this law today. How we pass out more laws as this goes on. And to start this dialogue to see what the board wants, it's not. It's not mine to tell you what to want, it is mine to tell you what the parameters of the law are. And the parameters of the law are plain, they're simple, here, and as distasteful as it may be. People have a right to say things that are distasteful at public meetings, it's not right morally maybe, but it's about the law.
So here's the problem with what this gentleman did, first he gave his authority three times on a police officer. Three times he, he, he exerted authority, I'm a police officer, I'm a walk Keegan police officer, I want to make a complaint, he brought a fifteen-year-old child into, into this meeting. He wanted the board to make us, make him apologize, okay? We have a board that can do it, right? Hold on, I got the floor, shut, okay? We don't, we're not going to make a grown man apologize to a nineteen-year-old kid, okay? First of all, police officers, he's a sworn police officer, he can make arrests, he can go on arrest and get tickets, we agree with that.
Wait, who do you mean he, you mean the police chief?
Or do you mean? The chief, the chief, our police chief. We have policies and procedures for making complaints against sworn officers, written complaints, up until a year ago, you had to swear by affidavit, you, if you, if you failed, you'd get perjured. You go to jail, you made a false statement. Why we didn't do a written procedure, this guy was allowed to do that, he's a walk Keegan officer, he knew best there were, that had to be a complaint. He should have been shut down, which I don't understand, the gavels getting thrown around between you two, you gave an extra forty, forty-three seconds. Only, only the mayor can get forty-three seconds, I, I watched the tape multiple times, this gavel's getting thrown around here.
What do you mean the gavels?
No, it's, it's right, it's right here. Your point of order, sir, on four, you've allowed him to ask multiple questions, the attorney shut me down after two questions. It's on the ordinance question number four.
The ordinance question number four, we're talking, we're not, we're doing this discussion to try and get the meetings going forward. In order, whatever, whatever happened in the past, that's what we're trying to correct, we're trying to make sure that didn't happen.
I, I think the specific situation you're talking about, again, is a private matter at this point, although it did become public, should limit what we talk about this in public. In that regard, as far as any time people are talking, I have in the past, in, in other meetings. You know, given the three-minute limit, I let people go over thirty seconds to a minute sometimes on their discussion. You know, I think that our procedure should be three to five minutes, depending on what, how many people are in here to talk and not having repetitive discussions. Again, this is a learning process for myself also in first year. There's been a lot of heated exchanges in these board meetings, more than I've seen in the past, at least from the public standpoint. And that's why I want to put something in place, or suggest that we put something in place. And like I said, this procedure that Lori reads in the beginning, it's great. But if somebody came and said that it's not in our ordinance or codified, it means absolutely nothing. So again, let's, I want to move forward with this, not backwards. And again, lessons learned on the, on the part about what can be said in the open meeting or not. And get apologies if it may publicly and privately in that regard. Justine Peterson?
I would like to, I would like to see one thing implemented. I'd like to see a time clock right there, that when someone starts talking, you hit a button, and it comes back from three minutes, and then it's over. They need to see their three minutes ticking away, and we need to see the three minutes ticking away, and I think it would alleviate a lot of guesswork. Okay, you're done. Thank you.
Justine Bluther?
Yeah, I've got, well, I do have the time bucket, keep that on. I have maybe a different view of this as. I tend to think that it's our job to listen to these people that come here. We don't get that many people that speak at our meetings. If someone feels strongly about it, I agree that there should be a timeframe. I also agree as the mayor is the chair of this meeting, should have the right to, to, to interrupt or stop that speech at some point. If it's reaching a limit, once again, without putting it all on paper on what we're allowing, but leaving it up to the chair to determine at that time. Now, I'd also like to see if there's a way, or if there's any way that we can put something in to override the chair's ruling. So if the chair was to rule that someone was out of order, if a member of the board wanted to, to, to say, you know, I, I have, I have, ever. To see if there's some way of doing that.
I think that there's a two-person, I think they use the word member and trustee interchangeably, sometimes that was a little confusing, yeah.
But we're writing up an actual ordinance on, on the rate to speed, like, I, I. Put in there that if the board or a significant number of the board disagree with the chair's ruling, that we could. You know, oversee that. But I think, you know, we're all adults, we're all elected officials, it's a public meeting. If they want to get up and speak and, and, and talk to us about an issue, I think we listen to them, we don't have to address them at that time, we can move forward. I think by trying to put in a set rule about whether they can hit their hand on a thing or do something else, I think we're just going to run into a lot of problems. I think the simpler the better, that we listen, and, and once again, if it becomes an ongoing issue, meeting after meeting after meeting, maybe we take a look at it. But it's not an ongoing issue, it's been some very specific issues. And I think we just need to, to, to kind of dial back the idea of trying to really limit what they're doing. Just put some set rules in place regarding the timing, you know, don't grant extra time, just let them talk and move on from there.
And I, I'd also like to hear feedback from trustees also. I always think three to five minutes, three minutes is a right amount of time, it's five minutes is a lot of time. So we, we should, you know, make sure we, whatever that number is, and, and we get a lot of polling the speech paper here that Lori reads, you know. I really have to be the rule and the guidance, because right now it's guidance, not the rule.
Are we allowed to limit any public discussion to items on the agenda?
Yeah, the public comment is open for public comment, and again, moralistically regrettable, yes. But ultimately, I hate to report on the law, but laws are laws, they can come in and they can talk what they want to for their three minutes now.
And when I was reading the, believe me, because I set up for till about two in the morning, reading cases about Open Meetings Act. So, you know, if it's, a comment's related to somebody's capacity as an official. You know, where, where that line is drawn between, that's a problem we're running into with these comments is where, where does the line cross between the personal versus the. Towards their capacity as a public official, and I think that's, you know, kind of the slippery slope of where we get into these. Discussions or comments from the public where it could fall into personal attacks versus what's related to their official capacity. Justine Berman?
I think there needs to be something in regards to, okay, let me, let me start over. In the beginning of things, my current situation, that's been going on for a year. There were conversations with the village, and it was stated that. School district stuff was not village business. There was nothing available to do about anything because it was a village business. And I've stated that over and over again, I made it clear, I'm getting lost, sorry. But yet, school district business continues to be pulled into, well, I should say the village is being pulled into school district business. And then as far as, I mean, when. Elected or even appointed officials, servants are. I guess being, I'm amazed we're attacked when they're being attacked. You know, basically stating that they're not allowed to say something or do anything about whatever the situation is with their child. That's infringing on a parent's rights. So that's where the line is drawn is. Being a parent, I mean, I, every time I try to do anything, I get restricted. There, that is where I think a lot of the, for my situation. And I, I think as well, chief gunshots, it's, those are our children, you know. I, I. I don't know, I feel like a broken marker for this, it's just, a lot of it's out of control, and we have to stop, otherwise, you know. I, I. It, this needs to be a big focus on this.
Justine Penney?
Well, I definitely think that we need to have more about this. My first question is, Lori reads is what they read at the high school, and so I got that from them attending the meetings. Gave it as a recommendation, just because they said it's always just a thirty-four, so my question is, is what she's reading, is that acceptable?
I, I think it is.
Oh, what?
No, okay. I think it is, I mean, I think.
Yeah, from the law, from the law.
There is one statement in there that I like, and it borders on it when it talks about requesting not to make personal attacks. It's a request, it's not a prohibition, that's, you know, use class, use the right, do the right thing. Because again, as regrettable as it is, those criticisms, when they involve the conduct of a president or former public official, performance of their duties. There's going to be latitude about it, but that language I like because it says request, and that, there's nothing wrong with making requests. That language that the mayor just pointed out has a three-minute limit, which I think people seem, just hearing the chatter of people like. The idea of having that three-minute hard limit, and then obviously you can always. You can mend it with a screwdriver or a boat or something like that to change what would be considered. I wasn't, those type of issues are the wrong tools, but it is, it is something that, though, what is said out there, only a lawyer can answer the yes or no question. Right, but yes, that does work legally, there are some very attractive parts of that. Obviously, we'll look at it in light of the opinion that I guess passed out and other law in the case, but I think that that's at least a good start. And again, this is just a start.
So, thank you for that. Second, and maybe they have it, I don't know. But the other question is on the three minutes, I think three minutes makes sense. But I think we also have to give some gratitude, because somebody's got ten seconds more, I just want to say three more. I mean, I like the idea of the clock, they use that at the schools as well, so you have that at days, or if somebody could say, you just have one more thing to say, but the other mayor could say. You know, you can finish. But it's not going to be any more than ten seconds or whatever, sure, it's not even in another three minutes. My question is on page eight, and the quote here, it says, the speaker may disrupt a council meeting by speaking too long. So the three minutes, here's, here's that, in unduly repetitious, or by extended discussion of irrelevancy. And I think when I read that, I'd like some clarity around that, because that to me speaks to some of the things that we're trying to address. If someone decides to come to this meeting and start talking about things that really are not village business, is that then an irrelevancy? So they come in and they talk about, you know, we won't disrespect, but trustee Berman, and they come and attack her about something that really has nothing to do with village business. Does that mean that that is impeding the meeting and can be stopped?
Can.
Or, yeah, here's.
Should I cut it in?
Meeting by something too long. Still writing that?
Yeah, you're talking about the, the first indenture.
The speaker may disrupt a council meeting by speaking too long, by being unduly repetitious, or by extended discussion of irrelevancies. And so in my mind, irrelevancy means somebody coming up and talking about something that has nothing to do with the village business. So in the case of trustee Berman, if they're coming up and they're talking about something that she is doing personally. And nothing to do with the village business, then would the mayor have the right to say this is not relevant? I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I, I, well, just you asked interject, that was what I said.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, um. Yeah, okay, um, yeah, so I. Extended discussion of the relevancies, and I'll pull the fact pattern from that case, the White versus City of Milwaukee, which is a California case. But if we're giving them a three-minute, I, I don't know whether, whether it's extended or irrelevancies, which is the main focus. Sometimes if they start reading the phone, and it goes beyond three minutes, is that where it's at?
But it says or, it didn't say either.
Or by extended discussions followed by the relevance.
So it's either they speak too long.
Well, extended discussion followed by the relevance.
Yeah, so my.
Right, I'm seeing if they go over their time, yeah.
No, I'm, I'm talking about having any kind of discussion, I guess, so what you're saying is that it's irrelevant, maybe over the three minutes.
Correct, it's a time limit, and there's always been a protection of time limits, as long as they're reasonable. And then unduly repetitious, the, and I'm just going backwards, unduly repetitious, you can limit it, it's the same people, but different people are going to come up to talk about the same thing over and over again. You can go and you could say, will we address that? If you have anything else, new, we'll address that issue. And then speaking too long, again, goes to the extended discussion of the relevance. So the point in reading this, and again, I am not asking for this to be memorized, I just want to give everybody an idea of where the starting point is. The point of reading this is, when you read through this, you will see that it's about how the meeting is operating. Rather than the words that are coming out of somebody's mouth generally. Again, this isn't a moral judgment, this isn't about right or wrong, this is what, the binding opinion from March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one of the attorney generals.
Okay, thank you for that, and then the last thing that I wanted to ask about was in the next paragraph, you know, what you said about harm style, and you talked about cocaine. Reviewing our law, restrictions on manner of speech rather than context speech. So if someone were to come in and start shouting, I mean, that's, they know we're not going to do this. Does then the mayor have the right to say, I'm sorry, you lower your voice, whatever?
Act within decorum, yeah.
Okay, but we need to.
I think when you look at what protections have been upheld, they are based upon, and they draw back to an ordinance or a formerly adopted rule to make them stronger. And everyone has served long enough on this board, that everybody knows at this point. Things that come with ordinances or resolutions are always held in a higher standard than a procurement statement that's made off the cuff of the meeting.
Thank you.
Justine again?
I wanted to touch back on the relevancy issue. To me, the irrelevancy is if we're up here discussing a parking lot, and somebody comes up here wanting to delay the meeting by just. Just interjecting statements about Mars, the moon, and who, how many salmon are on the beach. There, there, to me, that's irrelevant to the conversation, as they're trying to delay whatever vote's going to come up. To me, that is what the relevancy is. Unfortunately, if you look at page ten of this, this packet, the first line there is talking about Ms. Chong. And it says, our review of the verbatim statement recording indicates that Ms. Chong's statement. Contained her opinions that were critical of the manner in which Ms. Mitten, a public employee, carried out her official duties. This is a matter of public concern protected by the First Amendment. And this, it goes on to talk about, when criticism involves the conduct of a president or former public officials, the performance of their public duties. Significant latitude must be allowed, as Attorney General's finding from the squad in two thousand and sixteen. Which to me means, unfortunately, if somebody doesn't like the way a public official is behaving, whether we believe it's right or wrong. That person unfortunately has a right to stand up here to address their government under the First Amendment and say, I don't like what this public official's doing. Even if it's in their private life. I don't like it when people are calling Village Hall and saying, trustee Pierce is, is putting a new house on his, on his yard. And I want to know if he's got all his permits, and comes up here and says, I called and they wouldn't tell me about his permits, trustee Pierce must be doing something wrong. That's me performing maintenance on my yard, and that's between me and the, my, the permitting and stuff. But they have, they give them trustee the right to, you say, trustee Pierce, and they've done this time and time again. About what is trustee Pierce doing? They send pictures of the stuff I do, you know, so as a trustee, I don't like it, it makes me uncomfortable. But the First Amendment gives a person the right to come before the village and say, trustee Pierce is the most rotten scoundrel I've ever met, whether I agree with them or not. And it's terrible, but they have, they have that right under the First Amendment. I, I don't have to like it, but they have it.
No, you're absolutely right, we've all been used to monsters.
You know.
Can you just say it here?
Justine Masick?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I said my opinion doesn't matter.
Justine Peterson?
Well, it looks as though people can come in, stay for three minutes wherever they want to stay. Regardless of whether it's abusive to us. And sit down, and the only thing that I'm asking is they have a clock here. And I like three minutes. I think you can stay whatever you want to stay in three minutes. So I have to say.
I'll bring it back. Linda Peterson and I had a conversation, she said this would not be allowed, this conversation should not be allowed in Lake County. So I'm going to ask that the attorney, talk to the Lake County attorney and ask, what are they doing differently? So I'm gonna ask that the attorney, talk to the Lake County attorney and ask, what are they doing differently? Do they get all the goofballs over there, just like we get them here? Linda said, verbatim, they would be shut down so quickly on their speech, they would not be allowed to talk, end quote.
I'll talk to the state's attorney's office trustee, and also talk to the, I know the problem attorney from Lake County, so I'll talk to both of them before the end of the week. Thank you.
Please report back.
Sure, of course, happy to do so.
Trustee, who's there, go right here, then, I'm just all in favor of a clock, no extensions, let them talk for three minutes. They're gonna wanna talk about, that if they continue to come meeting after meeting with the same subjects, that's where these rules can come in. We're all grownups. We put ourselves out here, you know, if they wanna come and rip us apart, let them come rip us apart, that's what we're here, you know, that, that's part of the process, it's what it is. I, I not like it, like the Scott said, or what Monsieur Pusson said, but it is what it is.
Trustee Berman?
I guess I don't, I don't know what else to say at this point as far as. Trying to get my point across about being parents, trying to protect children, um. You know, our, our children aren't village business, um. No, I, I feel that, um, you know, it's not just coming here and making public comments, it's. Every situation, um. That an individual is coming here for to speak about, um. I think that matters, what, what the content of that public comment is, um. You know, and it, it's, what happens when it's public speakers that. It's not like they just came here to give their three minutes, saying whatever they want, no matter how abusive it is. But when they've done other things prior to that. Looking pretty much for any little thing, um. I, I guess to ruin a person's, ruin their reputation, um, it's not just public comment, it's everything else that has occurred. Before that. That also has to be taken into account, because that is, um. Repetitious, too, in my opinion, even though it's, it's not as far as strictly public commenting, um, I think there's many factors that go into this, um. And. I think when people, when public speakers are intentionally, obviously, they're intentionally calling in your elected position or your appointed position, um. That, that's not okay, it's not, um, I didn't, you know, if it's me or whoever else said it's being accused. If we've made it clear that that's strictly what it is, um, we shouldn't have to hear over and over again, you know. We, whatever we've been doing or saying is from our elected or appointed position, um. It doesn't matter how many times you say it, doesn't matter how many times you document it. Certain individuals will do whatever they have to, to make you look like you're lying. So.
Trustee Domenack?
So, three minutes, the language that we're, we're looking at, the language that we're always using. When you're talking about repetition, are you talking about. At the same meeting, people speaking on the same side? Or, or would you also conclude, trustee Berman's point, someone comes. And at one meeting, and texts trustee Pearson, and then at the next meeting, someone comes and then texts the thing, and then trustee Berman or myself, or anybody. Is that right for the repetitions?
Every single day, the same thing.
No, no, I'm wondering, too. I mean, and, and the reason I bring this up is because on Facebook, somebody said, you know, what, for the bill for me, and you can say whatever you want about anything. Everybody has to just sit down and listen, it's me that was distracted, like I thought, you know, which I didn't think was appropriate, but it could affect any one of us. And so, does that? All in the repetition?
The, the analysis of repetition normally, in that relative to judicial challenge, has only come up, in my review, at the same meeting. Twenty people wanna come up and talk about the same special use term, so you limit it to three people. Um, when you read this opinion, there is a nuanced section of it, that talk about people's past conduct, and how it goes into. How we judge them for being disruptive, or whatnot, so I would, again, this is just the start of a discussion. Um, I would prefer to have some time to look at the idea of how much law there's out there, or guidance out there about. For twenty-six consecutive two-week meeting cycles, I've come in and I've said the same thing. In different municipalities where I've represented, we have people who come in and literally say the same criticizing thing over and over and over again. And it's never been brought up as being repetitions, it's been more along the lines of twenty people at the same meeting, bringing up the same point. And then that being redundant to a point of not allowing the business to go on, does that help answer the question?
Answers the question, and it'd be interesting to figure through, seems there's anything else here that could be, because it is disruptive. And it's, it's not, I understand, they have a person on the right, can say whatever they want to say, et cetera, et cetera, we're gonna need the three minutes, but at some point in time.
I'm sorry, yeah, it is.
Anything that we could do to.
Yeah, um, just for, you want, and then last comments, and then we'll get some direction in discussion.
To trustee Mason's point, which is a good one, um, I'm gonna ask the county also to give me whatever guidelines, not necessarily code, because we can pull the code. Whatever guidelines that they use, that Commissioner Peterson referenced, that would be the touchstone, this is. I'll save it for last time, now I need redundant, this is a start, and any suggestions are welcome. And if the county has something out there that's good, that we could draw upon and use, I will give it to all of you and say, this is something that we saw that would work, it might help. Um, but again, the point of this is to start it and to give you guys the overview, we all, the overview. That says, you know, it's content neutral primarily, and what we can make rules upon. And if you really want to allow for the calling of a decorum card, you really need an ordinance to back it up.
Ms. Collins?
I'm just gonna change the subject just a little bit here, on page one thirty-four of the packet, or page five of this ordinance. It talks about disturbing meetings and enforcement, and. You get down to number four, it says the penalty, um, any person violating the provisions of this subsection, which shall be fined one hundred dollars for each offense. Is that any person publicly present in the village board members also? It's gonna probably turn around and bite you, because it always does, but. My question is, if we're gonna enforce behavioral rules on the public, and decorum rules. Shouldn't we have the same expectation? I mean, I know we've got our, we've got our contact ethics and stuff, but.
It says person, and most trustees are people, so yeah, it would be all persons, it would be, it doesn't say numbers, it doesn't say trustees, it doesn't say, um, others of the public, so it would be seratic. I mean, I, we didn't write that, that's why it's not on the line, um, but it says person, so if you were to ask me to make an interpretation of that, I would say it's persons.
But just to clarify, this is about public comment, so maybe we need to, to kind of get our own code of conduct.
That's a good point, because this comes in off of the meeting, this is, this is the same code section that addresses electronic meetings and other matters of decorum. So we could parse that out as well, um, because honestly, if someone became belligerent. And the chief or whomever serves as the quote-unquote sergeant-at-arm at that point, and had to remove that, they would probably be charged more offenses than. Maybe took a swing at somebody, it's not just getting charged a hundred dollars.
Yeah, but if, how does a trustee rant and rave and hear about some issue? And the, the mayor finally, he's tired, made his gavel, tells the chief to drag me out with my white hair. And then I sit outside of him for a little while, I mean, that happens in meetings, and not just, I haven't really seen it here, but. I mean, but I've seen in twenty years, one, I think, one or two members of the public has to leave, the police have to stand next to them and encourage them to leave. Um, but you read about other communities where. Meetings get kinda heated, and finally the mayor throws somebody out, that, that becomes like a, a, a political, a lawsuit-type issue. And all sorts of newspaper issues and stuff, that they're having to do that, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely, I've been, I may have been part of some of those meetings where I've seen people escorted out, I regularly see people escorted out of some meetings. And I know there are people who address the Lake County Board that actually are there to elicit lawsuits, to, to go on to that. So it is, um, yeah, it becomes a thing, and I, I think it's great that you've always seen it twice in your experience, because I'll probably see it twice this month. So, it's, it's great, it shows that the village is trying to get stuff done generally, but, um, but yeah, we could parse out that, whatever it is. Uh, paragraph four, um, as this evolves.
I, I think this is a good and important discussion, I appreciate everyone's comments on this, and I think, you know, we can start with incorporating what we. Read before the meetings and the shot clock, so to speak, and that. And then, um, come back and continually discuss this until we come to something we're comfortable with, but. Try to get work on it.
Yeah, we'll work on it, but it's, it's something a little different, um, and I, I don't know. I'm not sure how to say it, um. So, like, not a situation where a public speaker is challenging me to just play the game with that. Okay, so let's see, uh, uh, somebody comes, you know, they use their minute, or speaking on a particular topic, um. Sorry, I'm, I'm trying to, okay, so what happens if. When, when we filed our petition packets to get on the ballot, um. There were certain forms that needed to be filled out, and signed, and whatever else, um. And, you know, in particular, there is a optional loyalty. And I, I, I don't know, I, I sent it, um, but what happens when, um. There's a public speaker that comes and, and is speaking about something that would be a violation of that loyalty, that we, we signed? It would be a breach of that, wouldn't it?
Okay, sorry, trustee, so there is, trustee, that is an excellent question, those are filed, and they are at the time that you file them. Um, and for that, when the loyalty, you hit a very sensitive topic, the loyalty is optional on its own. And, and I don't remember the exact verbiage, but it says basically that you're being loyal to the Constitution of the State of Illinois, I think, if, if you have United States Constitution.
There's.
I don't remember the exact verbiage, that is, that one in and of itself is a little bit different than the rest, um.
Not, not when we were sworn in, like the.
What, you mean your petitions, when you file, when you circuit them?
Yeah, get on to bill it.
So that is a separate proceeding that this, I understand what you're saying, but, um. I have not seen anyone challenge at the electoral process level, which is a little bit different, but why they said it, because of the loyalty. And I think people would be afraid to do it, because it's optional on its own, so we had a little bit of a less weight. So it's a separate, the electoral process things are generally seen as separate than the village procedures here.
Just a piece of trivia, that used to be mandatory to sign that.
Right, I think the communist, yeah.
And I, I think I had, I hadn't signed it, submitted, signed one, first or second, that may have dropped.
Well, let's, let's also, any questions that come between now and then, obviously email Jimmy, and then, you know, maybe in. Hopefully things are quiet at the September fourteen meeting, maybe we, you know, revisit this month, but, how, is, um. I would say that we can probably, um, move forward with, you know, as long as this is not void against public policy, what we read. We do probably at least incorporate that to our, um, village ordinance, where it says the order of the meeting, and then put something in there that says. Prior to public comment, this should be read, or these are the rules of the, of, at least to get the ball rolling. And then, or you'll buy a nice clock with a loud alarm on it. All right, um, anything else? I had a motion adjourned at the count, and I believe there has been a request for executive session, um, showing from trustee, their administrator, kind regarding.
Property disposal.
Property disposal, and I believe there might also be one from trustee Mason.
Yeah, this follow-up.
Personnel?
That, and it was followed by a question that was supposed to be brought back from the last, that is stated.
From our last, from those sessions?
From our last, like, exact session that we never brought, never got, never got a question answered.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, trustee, is that just for pending litigation?
The, the ones, the ones pending litigation, and the others follow-up from the question asked, was, you're supposed to bring it back, the question for your last, second session.
But was it related to the question?
Yeah, no, it's a, it's really the, legal, well, you're supposed to follow up with the attorney.
Was it on personnel, property, everything?
Personnel, personnel, okay, personnel, alright.
So, um, I have, I need a motion, um, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the count meeting. Yeah, 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 to motion to go into executive session, alright, motion trustee Domenack, second trustee Pierce. Roll call please, no, no additional business to take place after executive session.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero voting no, we are in executive session, no further business to take place after executive session.